And welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of May 24, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley.
Here.
Councilmember Schuler.
Here.
Councilmember Lynn.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
I do believe both Councilmembers Foreman and Studley are in the building, so we will call them present.
I am present as well.
Oh, Mayor Clark, sorry.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item one is approval of the minutes, approval of the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of April 12, 2022. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have several proclamations on tonight's agenda, and the first is the proclamation of the mayor of the city of Oklahoma proclaiming the month of June 2022 as Pride Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. A proclamation of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of June 2022 as Pride Month in the city of Norman. Whereas, the month of June is designated as Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots which occurred in June of 1969 and are recognized as the catalyst of the LGBT rights movement. And whereas, the city of Norman recognizes a community's strength includes the principles of inclusion, equity, and the inalienable rights of all people to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, Norman's LGBTQ+ communities contribute in significant ways through serving in various industries across Norman such as education, business, arts, health, technology, law enforcement, nonprofits, and others. And whereas, it is important to recognize the LGBTQ+ community continues to experience targets, discrimination, and violence. And whereas, the city of Norman recognizes organizations such as Norman P. Flag established in 1995 and Norman Pride established in 2018 who help provide sources of support, information, and community for the people it represents and their families. And whereas, the city of Norman's inclusion commitment extends through public safety and services, including the Norman Police Department's upcoming partnership with Norman Pride, P. Flag, and City of Norman LGBTQ+ Alliance Employee Resource Group to host the NPD Community Pride Fest with the goal of creating spaces for celebration, awareness, and building relationships across community and law enforcement. And whereas, awareness drives greater education and relationships which drive empathy and understanding. Now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as Pride Month in the city of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating inclusion across our community. I'd now like to recognize Michael Robertson, our LGBTQ+ police liaison at the Norman Police Department and P. Flag Norman president, and Tate Hughes, Norman Pride Board member, to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor, city manager, and council for this proclamation. The declaration of National Pride Month, that only means a lot to me and my family, but to the entire LGBTQIA2S+ Norman community. I would also like to thank the Norman Pride Board for hosting an outstanding pride a few weeks ago. Our police department's Diversity and Equity Committee was ecstatic to participate, and many people were happy and supportive to see us there. I've been to a handful of pride celebrations across country, and I've never seen a police department participate with a booth until then, and I was proud to be a part of that. Historically, we know there have been major struggles between law enforcement and the LGBTQ+ community, and I want you all to know that there are many of us that will never stop trying to change that. With the assistance of the chief Diversity and Equity Officer Cynthia Allen, we now have a city email policy that includes the use of pronouns. We also have a policy that recognizes transitioning and accommodates gender identity. Additionally, we are hosting our first-ever Community Pride Fest at East Downtown next Thursday, June 2, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. It's my hope to see many faces and celebrate the opening of National Pride Month and to also build trust and relationships between our department and the community. That being said, I know we can do better. There's been an abundance of negative legislation across the country lately, specifically targeting the LGBTQ+ community. I can't stand up here in uniform and tell you how to vote. However, I can encourage you to be kind, support one another, and to be an ally. Meaning, you don't have to be lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual, or two-spirit to support those who are. Be an ally. It's time to bring Norman back together. Let's make it happen this month. Happy Pride.
So as mentioned earlier, Pride Month is inherently rebellious given the context of its history when Marshall P. Johnson initiated Stonewall riots. With modern-day issues taking form as overarching reproductive justice issues and abortion laws affecting transgender men and queer women and the rest of the queer community, it's also taken form the continuous attempt to suppress trans rights and access to gender-affirming health care, which, as a reminder, is best medical practice. Pride Month reminds us to celebrate how incredibly diverse a community is and the progress we have made, but it also serves as a reminder to what we still need to achieve. This proclamation is meaningful because it recognizes the work done by the community and so many of its fierce leaders. Norman banned conversion therapy this last year, which will have a lasting positive impact on our community, and we also threw the largest pride Norman has seen a few weeks ago, indicating that Pride Festival is much needed and wanted in this community. This work was done in support by fierce community members, city council, and many, many advocates and allies. These are examples of why this proclamation is important. They exemplify what can happen when the Norman queer community and allies advocate for better protections for all and are heard, thus allowing Norman to be a safe and inclusive community. Thank you for the honor of accepting this proclamation on behalf of the Norman Pride Board, and one final thing is to protect trans youth and their right to exist. Happy Pride Month.
Item four is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of June 2022 as National Safety Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. I turned two pages. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Item three. It was a test, he passed. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Norman. Whereas, mental health is part of everyone's overall health and contributes to the health of the community overall. And whereas, mental illnesses affect millions of Americans and does not discriminate among genders, races, ethnicities, and socioeconomic statuses. And whereas, the stigma and resulting discrimination is a primary obstacle to identification and effective treatment for individuals. And whereas, early identification and treatment can make a difference in the successful navigation of mental illness and recovery. And whereas, the theme for 2022's Mental Health Awareness Month is Together for Mental Health, which highlights the importance of working together to advocate for mental health and access to resources. And whereas, as the city of Norman, we value the professional mental health services providers across our community and recognize the need is great. And whereas, by working together and raising awareness, we can help improve the lives of individuals and families to support healthy and fulfilling lives for healthy communities. And now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Norman and encourage everyone to recognize we all have a part to play in the success of driving mental health by reaching out to friends and loved ones, supporting local organizations, and one another as a community. I would now like to recognize Shamika Williams, Director of Children's Services and interim executive director of the Central Oklahoma Community Mental Health Center, to make a few comments.
Thank you, city council, city mayor, and the city of Norman, and the staff at Central Oklahoma Community Mental Health Center as they commit their, as they commit daily to serving those with mental illness daily. Again, mental illness is something that, as you mentioned, that, Mayor, that all of us will face at some point in time. We definitely think the city of Norman, we continue to support the city of Norman as we battle individuals who have mental illness daily. We are committed to serving the city, we're committed to serving the county, and those children and families within our county. So again, we thank you for this proclamation. On behalf of Central Oklahoma Community Mental Health Center, we're here to serve, and don't hesitate to contact us at any time. Thank you.
And now, on to item four, a proclamation of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of June 2022 as National Safety Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of June 2022 as National Safety Month in the city of Norman. Whereas, the rate of unintentional injuries and deaths in the United States remains at unacceptable levels. And whereas, addressing musculoskeletal disorders, educational impairment, using tools to prevent injuries, and mitigating falls remains critical to preventing injuries and deaths. And whereas, the cost of unintentional injuries to workers and their employers exceeds $1.158 billion each year and causes great suffering among individuals and their families. And whereas, the National Safety Council and the Oklahoma Safety Council work to promote policies, practices, and procedures leading to increased safety, protection, and health in business and industry, in schools and college, on roads and highways, and in homes and communities. And whereas, the summer season is a time of increased rates of unintentional injuries and deaths, and it is an appropriate time to focus attention on injury risks and prevention. Now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 as National Safety Month in the city of Norman and urge the citizens and businesses of Norman to practice safe and healthy behaviors in all aspects of their lives. I would now like to recognize Darren Alexander, manager of Training and Development with Oklahoma Safety Council, and Brandon McLendon, safety manager here for the city of Norman, to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor, city manager, and city council. This is a special proclamation because I take it seriously. I'm the safety manager here at the city of Norman, but I'm representing the employees of the city of Norman, and they take pride in the safety culture here at the city of Norman. In fact, April was the first year, and I've been here almost eight years, that we had zero recordable injuries, so that's a good thing. Hopefully we can continue that trend. But we strive to have a zero injury culture, and I appreciate all the departments, the department heads, everyone that works for the city of Norman, and how they support me and support our employees. So thank you, and this is a great thing to have. Appreciate it.
I'm Darren Alexander, Oklahoma Safety Council. Betty Kulikowski asked me to come down here and accept this. She did not tell me I had to talk. So what he said, except everything should be with the National Safety Council, Oklahoma Safety Council, we do appreciate this. We've got it with the city of Tulsa. We worked with the city of Oklahoma City to get the bridge lit up last month for safety, so you'll see that for the month of June also. But we appreciate you guys' support, and thank you for the proclamation.
And council, last week, Brandon was providing CPR training for a group of city employees. He does that semi-regularly just to keep us all safe so we can take care of each other in the event that service is needed. So thank you, Brandon.
Maybe you should do that at the upcoming retreat. Let council have some free CPR training. Okay, on, oh, two. Council announcements. Councilmember Studley, Ward one.
I'll be quick. So I just wanted to first thank Mark Nanny for serving as Ward one Green Belt Commission, and then also for Stephen Swanson for serving as Ward one Bicycle Advisory Committee. And then I have received emails and messages from many of you about the upcoming or the proposed, excuse me, construction that will be, or that was in Planning Commission last week for Imhoff and Oakhurst. I am aware that there's a lot of concerns. Please email me at wardone@normanok.gov, or feel free to call or text my city cellphone at 405-876-9170. I would be interested in hear what your concerns are and what you think that we could do to resolve this. So looking forward to reaching out, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Ward two, Councilmember Schuler.
Thanks. I will also be brief. Want to make note of the several individuals that will be serving from Ward two on a couple of commissions, or boards, I should say. Pat Hall on the Norman Regional Hospital Authority, Trey Gorley on the Tree Board, and then for Nelson Dent, who will be continuing to serve on the ADA Citizens Advisory Committee. And I also wanted to give a shout out to our fire department and Mstat. Today, I had an incident while I was hosting a conference where one of my students had an incident, and they were extremely quick in providing service, and their professionalism was outstanding. So I just want to give a shout out to their services and what they were able to provide. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ward three, Councilmember Lynn.
This last week was National Police Week, and there were just a ton of great events that I was thankful to partake in some of them. I just want to give a shout out to our community for all the time and donations that they made and volunteers that I hope that we showed some great support to our men and women in blue this last week through some of these great events, and also all the political leaders that partook in some of these events. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward four, Councilmember Hall.
Well, first of all, I would like to congratulate Food and Shelter on their inspiring groundbreaking event for their share center yesterday with the support of the McCowen family, Ideal Homes, and Landmark Homes. A new food pantry that addresses food insecurity for the most vulnerable in our community will become a reality very shortly, and this is just one more shining example of what nonprofits with the support of private partners, what we can accomplish and what that looks like in Norman. Second thing is, it's not too early to be thinking about participating in Juneteenth on Saturday, June 18, from 5:30 to 9:30 at Reeves Park. Early registration is now open for vendors through June 10. And if you're interested in being a vendor, more info can be found on the city of Norman website. Jazz in June is also back on June 16 through 18, six to 10 nightly in Andrews Park in historic downtown Norman. I know that's a community event that so many like to participate in. And I would also like to show my appreciation for the following Ward four residents that are willing to volunteer their time and talent to serve our community. Benjamin Baranowski on the Environmental Control Advisory Board, and Sue Ringus on the Library Board.
Thank you. Ward five, Councilmember Tortorello.
I would also like to congratulate the McCowen family for that event we had yesterday with the share center. I think it's time that private and public partnerships, this is a good example of what we can do together as a city. You know, this is a, this is going to be a place where a single mom can go with her kids with no shame but with dignity and get what she needs and then leave. So, you know, I think working together in this area to bring dignity to single parents like that, and the whole idea of working with all the food pantries to consolidate into one operation, I think makes better use of our resources. I would also like to thank our police officers. Last week, we had some cookouts, and it's always nice to see the community and leaders come together and support our guys in blues. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ward six, Councilmember Foreman.
I'd also like to thank Bianca Gordon and Rod Ackman for their continued service for their community from Ward six to their respective boards. On Saturday, Councilmember Peacock and I had a lot of fun in the cold and wind picking up trash. He got in gutters, literally in gutters, and was pulling out trash, so he's very committed to that. So sun is looking great right now. Go walk through when it stops raining. Again, we don't have any council meetings next Tuesday, and it's not because it's Memorial Weekend, it's just the fifth Tuesday. But I just wanted to say to all of the families left behind, if you've lost someone in active duty, thank you. Also, I know what you're going through. My best friend is a Gold Store widow, and so thank you for your family and your sacrifices as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward seven, Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I also want to give a thank you and recognition to Ward seven resident Doug McClure for agreeing to serve on the Planning Commission. It actually took me a few months to find somebody, and so I'm very thankful that Mr. McClure was willing to. He's got a background that makes him very qualified for this position, so I'm excited to get him on here. And this whole other list of Norman citizens from across the whole city that are stepping forward and willing to serve on various boards and commissions that help us make better decisions up here, hopefully. So thank you to all of you for willingness to do that. Also want to remind everybody to get registered to vote by next Friday, June 3. Get registered or update your status. There's also new precincts. Many of you might have already gotten a new card, I guess. I got mine recently, so maybe you don't need to do that. But if you aren't registered, you have till next Friday to vote in the primaries coming up at the end of June. So lots of important things will be on the ballot in June and August and then November, so, and then back here at city council in February again. So it's just nonstop, a whole bunch of opportunities to vote all the time. So if you're wanting to vote in the next election, June 3 is the deadline. And then I want to encourage everybody as well, if you are interested in things like public transit, infrastructure, streets, things like that, I would encourage you to attend the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting this Thursday at 4:00 p.m. We meet the fourth Thursday of every month generally at 4:00 p.m., and we talk about, we get a ridership report every month on our public transit system. So if you are interested in how many people ride the bus, or how much does the bus system cost, what are our future plans for the system, all of those things we address in that committee every month. It's open to the public, and you're welcome to come. Send us any of your questions. You can send them to me at wardseven@normanok.gov or your particular council member, if you would prefer, and we'll make sure that we address those questions or comments. We will also be talking about ADA issues with the new central library, talking about how the building overall is holding up now that it's been open for three years. So are there things that need to be improved? Are there things that aren't working anymore that we need to look at? How is it functioning? All those types of things. So we'll be talking about that again this Thursday at 4:00 p.m. If you're not able to attend in person here at city hall, the meetings are generally always available to watch live on the city of Norman YouTube channel, and you can replay all the meetings on the city of Norman YouTube channel as well. So thank you very much. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ward eight, Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah, I just want to echo the comments of Councilmember Foreman. We did have a great turnout on Saturday morning, and I just want to say thank you to everybody who gave up their Saturday to come help us pick up trash. Place looks great, and I cannot wait My two Move with the Mayor events will actually happen before our next council meeting, so mark your calendars. Westwood Pool opens up this weekend. Very excited about that. And if you're not following Norman Parks and Recreation and the Westwood Park Norman, I think that's what their page is, all the events are there. There's, it's so awesome how much is going on, and it's so nice to see it back. You know, we went to Encanto Movie in the Park last Friday. It was the busiest movie in the park I've ever seen. So, you know, and they've got adult ones, too. I'm signed up for Raiders of the Lost Ark in Westwood Pool in June, so check it out. And they have adult ones, glow ones, it's a good time. So, but Saturday at 10:00 a.m., you can, it's free to get in if you're going to do the Aqua Zumba with the mayor. That's right. So, it's a better workout than you think it is, I promise. So, join me. And then also mark your calendars for Sunday, June 12th at 6:30 p.m., we'll be doing Sunset Yoga at Legacy Park. So, pretty excited about that. And then this Sunday, I guess it's Memorial Day weekend, but if you are sticking around, join us for Summer Breeze at 7:30 p.m. at Lyons Park. You can also check out the new Artful Inlets put in by the Norman Arts Council. And this Sunday, they'll be featuring the Contra Band. I'm a sucker for a good name. You know that? Okay. I'll turn it over to the city manager for his own announcement.
Just wanted to take a minute to thank City Attorney's Office for their diligence and enduring efforts to get us to a close of escrow today in a very complex real property transaction with Norman Regional Healthcare Systems. We've now cleaned up the plat at the Porter campus, and we have now received Title II 718 North Porter, and will jump back into escrow with the county here in the coming days. Construction fencing for Senior Wellness should go up by Tuesday, Wednesday next week at the latest, and parking lots are going to start getting torn up. Dirt's going to be flying, and Senior Wellness will be well on its way. So, happy to share that with our community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Now onto the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items if they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. Staff recommends items 5 through 25 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items 5 through 25 on the consent docket.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to place items 5 through 25 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast. Items 5 through 25 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 5, consideration of acknowledgement, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of the mayor's appointments as follows. The ADA Citizens Advisory Committee, Sue Favors, Ward 8, Nelson Dent, Ward 2. The Bicycle Advisory Committee, Stephen Swanson, Ward 1. The Advisory Board, Benjamin Baranowski, Ward 4. Green Belt Commission, Mark Nanny, Ward 1. Human Rights Commission, Dr. Benbin Bing, Ward 8, and Aisha Ali, Ward 3. Library Board, Deborah Engel, Ward 3, Sue Ringus, Ward 4, Bianca Gordon, Ward 6. Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau, Steve Gillis, Ward 3. The Norman Regional Hospital Authority appointment has been removed from the agenda. Planning Commission, Liz McCown, Ward 8, Doug McClure, Ward 7. Tree Board, Rod Ackman, Ward 6, Trey Gorley, Ward 2. Item 6, consideration of the mayor's appointment of Amanda Nairn to the Central Oklahoma Master Conservancy District in adoption of Resolution 2122-124. Item 7, consideration of the mayor's appointment of Dr. Edgar O'Rear to the Central Oklahoma Master Conservancy District. Receipt of the, item 8, receipt of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of April 30th, 2022. Item 9, receipt of the monthly departmental reports for the month of April, 2022. Item 10, submission of the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau Visit Norman Annual Report from June 30th through December 31st, 2021. Item 11, declaration of surplus and/or obsolete equipment and materials in authorizing the sale or disposal thereof. Item 12, acceptance of a permanent public sidewalk and utility easement from Larry Hollingsworth, Linda R. Anderson, Phil and Kristy Ann Hollingsworth Trust, and Lisa J. Porterfield in the amount of $2,585 for the Porter Avenue Streetscape 2019 Bond Project. Item 13, granting a permanent public roadway sidewalk and utility easement to the City of Norman and the Norman Utilities Authority for the Norman Forward James Garner Phase 2 Project from Acre Street to Flood Avenue. Item 14, change order number 2 to Contract 2021-10 between the Norman Municipal Authority and Landmark Construction Group LLC, increasing the contract amount by $50,314 and adding 60 calendar days for the Household Hazardous Waste Facility and Container Maintenance Facility Project. Item 15, change order number 4 to Contract 2021-53 with Rudy Construction Company Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $8,380 for the Porter Avenue and Acre Street Intersection Project, final acceptance and payment. Item 16, number 4 to Contract 2021-115 with Crossland Construction Company Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $5,56,449 for a revised contract amount of $11,158,521 for the Senior Wellness Center. Item 17, change order number 3 to Contract 2122-59 with Haskell Lemon Construction Company, decreasing the contract amount by $2.58 for the Imhoff Bridge Emergency Repair Project, final acceptance and payment. Item 18, bid contract and associated bonds with Parathon Construction in the amount of $403,235 for the McGee Drive Concrete Pavement Repair Project. Item 19, acceptance of a subgrantee award valued at $8,524.24 for a mini-ray calibration kit to be used by the Hazardous Materials Unit of the Fire Department. Item 20, acceptance of a recreational trails grant in the amount of $111,200 from the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department for improvements to the George M. Sutton Urban Wilderness Park. Item 21, contract right-of-way license with the Meeting Place, allowing the licensee to install certain improvements in the public right-of-way for a limited period of time. Item 22, a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the Federal Transit Administration, FYE 2022 Grants for Buses and Bus Facilities Program for two Gilig CNG 35-foot transit buses for the Fix Route fleet and four Dodge Pro Master paratransit vans. Item 23, a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the United States Department of Transportation's FYE 2022 Low or No Emission Vehicle Program Grant Program for two Gilig CNG 35-foot transit buses for the Fix Route fleet. Item 24, a resolution authorizing joint petition settlement of a workers' compensation case filed by Reagan Harris. Item 25, a resolution authorizing joint petition settlement of a workers' compensation case filed by William Will Bryan Cruz. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket?
Yes, I would just like to draw attention to item number 18, which is road concrete pavement repair for McGee Drive, which is between Highway 9 and Westbrook Terrace. I've received a lot of interest in that area. There's some buckling in the road, and it's very bumpy and in poor condition, and so I'm happy to see this being moved forward, but just know that there is going to be some delays around that area. I know that it's also around the Imhoff Bridge construction area, and that we've seen a lot of improvement projects going into this part of Ward 2. So please be patient and bear with our road construction crews to get this done, but it is a much-needed improvement that I'm happy to see come to the ward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
So, I'd like to just point out Agenda Item Number 17, for anyone who has any worries about us not having our eye on the ball for every dollar and cents that we account for in our contract, we are decreasing the contract amount for this particular agenda item by $2.58. Way to go. I'm sure we're going to roll that into another project, so, awesome. And then I'd also like to point out that we are now successfully allowing the Meeting Place to go forward with a streetery project. This has been a project that many of us have loved and supported the idea, and have watched other communities come forward as we have dealt with the pandemic and offering original and creative outdoor spaces to enjoy a good meal. And we started this discussion, I believe, in the fall of October 2020. You know, we deliberate carefully about what we do next, but congratulations to the Meeting Place for willing to participate in this first project and work with city staff to hopefully come up with a process that's going to work for other restaurants that'll take advantage of it. So I'm really excited to see that go forward.
Agreed. Told you we'd get it done. Just took a minute. All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now on to non-consent items. Item 26, we will be conducting and closing the second public hearing for consideration of approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of the FYE 2023 City of Norman Proposed Operating and Capital Budgets. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. Unanimously, the public hearing is now open.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Kim Kaufman, our budget manager, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Kim Kaufman, the budget manager. I was hoping there'd be a presentation on the screen. Is it?
You want me to advance it for you?
No, I can do it. Okay, perfect. I'm just going to be giving a brief overview of the city manager's proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. So to begin, the budget document is many things. It not only outlines our entire city budget, but it's also a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communication tool. And the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the City of Norman the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the last 30 years, more than any other city in Oklahoma, except for Oklahoma City, and that's more than Tulsa. Just want to point that out. And the budget document is available on the city's website, normanok.gov, or you can get a hard copy at the Finance Department. So total projected revenues over all funds in the fiscal year 23 proposed budget is Sales tax is 36% of this revenue budget, followed by other taxes at 12%, fees and charges at 24%, and other revenues at 10.1%. Total projected expenditures in the proposed budget are $245,281,720. Public safety comprises 23% of the total expenditure budget. That includes police and fire. Capital improvements follows at 16%. Public Works is then at 11% of those expenditures. The General Fund is the largest fund for the City of Norman, and it supports all departments except for utilities. Total revenues for the General Fund are projected $100,769,620, and 65% of that, the majority, comes from sales and use tax. General Fund expenditures by department in the projected or the proposed 2023 budget, The largest portion of these expenditures come from the Police Department at 28%, followed by Public Works at 23%, and Fire Department at 19%. So that was a quick overview. Tonight is the second budget hearing. The last budget hearing, there's an optional study session on June 7th, and then the budget will be presented to the council for adoption on June 14th. And with that, we'd like to welcome public input.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers registered?
Yes, ma'am. We'll start with Robert Castleberry.
I get to start, huh? Yes, well, thank you for the opportunity to address this council, and that $2.58 is a big deal. We never could do that when I was on council. Do you realize when you get done with your term, you will have voted on $2 billion of money? Your budget is a quarter of a billion dollars. Just to put that in frame of what you guys do. So, in my opinion, the budget is the most important and the hardest thing you do as council members. I got to do it seven times, and even as a CPA who works with numbers every day, it's a daunting task. So fortunately, you have a great city manager puts together, and Finance Director and the budget staff, including Ms. Kaufman, to guide you in the process. This might be the most difficult budget council has considered in a long, long time. And I say that, that's because you have a significant projected budget surplus for this year and going forward, in the range of approximately $7 to $8 million of surplus this year, and $10, $11 million going forward. So it's not a problem of what do we cut in order to make this. You have the opportunity of what to spend and how to spend it. And so, I think that's a harder decision sometimes of what our priorities are. As we talked about, it's a communications tool and a budget priority deal. I think given the rate of inflation, oil and gas prices, a probable recession, the out years are very unpredictable and very uncertain. Inflation would generate more sales tax dollars. Obviously, we've seen that, because you're getting a higher percentage on a higher number. But you're also going to have the expenditure side of it, too. So that has impacted your expenditures and capital projects going forward. I've only had three minutes, so I'm going to get to the point. First thing I want to do, I want you to do is not spend all the money. Make sure you have ample reserves. I believe the Rain Day Fund is at 5%, so we've done a good job there, but we also need to see the fund balance in general to keep that up there. One of the reasons why you have excess in the funds in this, in this last year, in my last year on council, we agreed to an ordinance to cut the annual 2% emergency reserve fund to 1%. With the understanding that when possible, the other 1% would go to a dedicated reserve, like the Community Outreach Fund you currently have, and it was built up over the years. We didn't put in the ordinance, because we don't want to tie your hands, but it was kind of an agreement that whenever we could, we would. We will have storms, we will have hail damage, we will have things. So I'd like to see you take that extra 1% and put that over into a reserve fund, kind of like you do for the Community Outreach. The internal honor position, I know you're going to talk about this in reserve, but I want you to go, I'd like for you to see you guys go ahead and reserve that. If nothing else, do it as a contract. It doesn't have to be a city employee. You can do it as a contract service, just like you do in any other study, and they will report directly to you until it passes. But I think we need to reserve-
I believe we have one more speaker, Jackson Foote.
So I was reminded at the beginning of the meeting that what happens in history quickly becomes the status quo unless people do something about it. So here's the history that I've been hearing over the last two years. Two years ago, George Floyd brought us together to talk about police force and political power. Normanites brought their stories of how that system of political power has negatively impacted them and people they know. They brought their hopes for sunshine, transparency, and human services that focus on mental health, relationship building, and finding access to resources and transportation. Last year, Normanites came to ask for less than 3% of the budget be spent on mobile mental health unit that would respond to mental health crises and build positive relationships among those in need, offloading potentially 10% of the force's weight so the officers could handle other obligations. The recent election focused very heavily on the severity of police budget cuts. Unfortunately, the response to the conversation about local policing has been less fiscal transparency. And today, I read that two audit positions are being defunded, or whatever you want to say, eliminated, in this budget. So the questions remain. It's kind of like a conversation that never happened. It started, but it never happened for some reason. Somebody shut it down. Did the police budget get cut in 2020 or any other year? Where's all the money gone that the special sales tax provided? First for officer hires, then for buildings? Why has the city had to top up the police budget for the last three years? Why did the Police Department need $9.5 million from COVID funds to make up for projects supposed to come from the special sales tax? This is what I've been hearing. I don't think I'm the only one asking these questions. So, the few answers that I do know, because I think an audit is desperately necessary, and I don't know how anybody would plan to assess the needs of a department without first doing an audit of the past to find out exactly what has happened over the last 14, 15 years. Norman Police Department spent $15 million in fiscal year 2008. So it's 1, 5, with six zeros or something after it. It spends $32 million, it's 3, 2, 6 zeros, now growing four times the growth of the population in that period. Police budgets outpaced other departments by 2 to 1. Salary spending also doubled during that period- Salary spending also doubled during that period, growing 88%, increasing every year but one during the period of lowest inflation in two generations. 168 employees in 2008, 251 employees today. Department has reorganized at least four times, including a new public relations division, which they hope to improve its image. And now you're asking for nine more officers. This time around. So the questions remain. I hope some answers are forthcoming.
Thank you. That is our only comments regarding the public hearing. Are there any comments from council regarding this item? Seeing then, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I do have a question. I just, I want to get a little bit of clarification because I think that there's some confusion of those additional nine positions that you're wanting to add back to NPD, the 865 funding that you've put for that. Is that the 865 that was pulled out of the budget in 2020?
Correct.
So you're taking that money that's been held in its place in the General Fund and putting that back to the police budget?
The money that was withheld will stay in reserve for purposes that council has identified. Those dollars still remain unspent.
So we still have the 865?
Yes. Yeah, I think they're, in total, it's about $1.3 million in that account.
So that will be in next year's budget line item in the general budget, the 1-point, whatever you're saying?
It, and Mr. Francisco, you may be able to describe to us how it's presented, but yeah, it is, it remains available to you to be appropriated and spent as council sees fit.
So the 865 that you're giving back to the police, if you will, is additional money that we found in the city now based off of sales tax and things like that?
It is.
Because you have a surplus.
Correct. It is coming from next year's revenue stream. It is not tied to the dollars that council had previously redirected.
From 2020.
Those dollars stay redirected for your use.
Okay. And so now that there's no more litigation, then we as a council can decide if we want to use that money on whatever we've appropriated it for in the past or continue to have discussions about that in the future?
Absolutely. Neighborhood Alliance is one of those programs that council did identify, and those dollars are programmed to be spent. We spent money in the current fiscal year and intend to renew that contract next fiscal year.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I appreciate Council, former Councilmember Castleberry coming out. I think you're the only accountant we've had on the council as long as I've been on the council, so very helpful to have someone with that background up here, for sure. And I hadn't really thought about how, I mean, this will be my 10th budget. So yeah, I guess about $2 billion that I've voted to approve. I would never imagine that in my life, for sure. So I agree with the comments made by former Councilmember Castleberry about the budget and the reducing it to 1% and then with the idea that using that 1% for things that may come up, not being a bad idea. And we saw that happen last year, and so far, nothing, but just expect it any day. And I did want to make sure, if we could, since this is a budget hearing, it's on the agenda, that we'd be able to answer staff or one of us or somebody respond to some of the questions that were asked by the second.
The internal auditor's position, what council did discuss at one of its study sessions was that the question will go, and it's in the agenda for this evening's actions, to place charter amendments on the ballot in August. One of those questions is to add the internal auditor position, which would report directly to council. And what we recognized budgetarily is if the voters approve that internal audit position, the goal would be to bring on the auditor first, let the auditor kind of outline what that office needs in terms of personnel support, and then make recommendations to bring on the support body that was originally envisioned by the council when that was discussed. So council will be taking a step tonight to put the question before the voters to create the internal auditor's position, and there are dollars in the budget to cover the cost of that individual should the voters approve it.
And in the PSST, we've, if I recall, we've hired all positions except for SROs and to dispatch.
That is, my understanding, Mr. Francisco, that is correct. And the dispatchers will bring to you for consideration when the new Emergency Operations Center is developed, where we'll have enough capacity in seating and hardware to accommodate the two additional. And then the balance of the SRO conversation has been dependent on the school district's ability to continue to participate.
Okay. Up to that, we've fulfilled all the hiring obligations that we had, voters had approved.
Correct.
And then I think one of the questions is about the EOC cost, and I think the original budget, and I, thinking back on it, I can't even believe that we thought $6 million. Like, I don't know what we were thinking, but it's gotten a lot more expensive than that, of course. Not only just as time has gone, but now especially with materials. Would that be a valid explanation for why we've had to come up with what I would describe as significant extra funding for that project?
Absolutely. The building in its ultimate design does include growth capacity for dispatch. It includes the space at which the Emergency Operations Center would be activated in the event of disaster, whether it be weather or generated through, you know, what could be a train derailment or that type of event. The facility is designed to be a hardened facility to withstand the greatest storms Mother Nature can throw at it. It also has capacity built in to facilitate 988 Dispatch, which is the Mobile Crisis Response Unit that goes live effective July 1. Tonight, we had with us Mr. Jeff Dismuks and Ms. Shamika Williams that accepted the proclamation for Mental Health Month, and recognizing those two individuals have been our primary contacts as the state moves to implement and activate the Mobile Crisis Response Unit and the 988 Dispatch Service. So all those things, as council had discussed in goals and objectives sessions in the past, are coming to fruition, just as you had described.
And the EOC is not just for Police Department, though, right?
Oh, absolutely.
All emergency response?
All emergency dispatch, police, fire, ambulance, and now mobile crisis response.
So I think, I appreciate the answers and elaborating on that. If there were any other questions, I hope we can get those answers from those to the ones.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
I like when I'm next. Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Yes.
Just for clarification, with the internal auditor and Councilmember Studley, correct me if I'm wrong, because I think you were just as passionate about this. So when it goes to the voters, we're talking about that position going under City Council.
Correct.
If it fails, I still want to make sure that that money's in the budget because I would like to proceed with this regardless of that. It will still be in there for clarification?
Yes. Money's in there, and as former Councilmember Castleberry identified, council will have two paths to potentially follow. One, contract, and the contract just says they report to the council, and they can be tasked to work on very specific things council sees or hears about or has concerns about. Or you could say, Mr. City Manager, create that job description and just bring them in under your office. Obviously, council recognizes your current ability to make contact directly with our department head team for questions and answers. Goals and objectives would be a great time for council to identify issues we'd like an internal auditor to look at. So yeah, there's still plenty of paths available to council going forward. We'll just have more clarity after the election in August to see what direction council would like to go.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Sorry, Councilmember Schuler.
It's okay. My clarification was exactly what Councilmember Foreman was asking about the other pathways if it fails with the vote people, so.
Okay, we can't ask questions from the crowd, but definitely see us afterwards. We'll make sure you get everything answered. All right. Seeing no other comments now. All right. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. I would like to clarify that adoption of the budget will actually take place this year at a special meeting of council on Tuesday, June 14th, same day as a regular council meeting, but it will occur at 1:00 PM in the afternoon. So please plan on attending that if you would like to watch the budget get adopted. But again, we'll still have a regular meeting at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. Item 27, a resolution amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove property located north of 1700 North Porter Avenue from institutional designation and place the same in medium-density residential designation. I need a motion to adopt or reject the land use plan amendment.
No, stood up.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Hello, my name is Fred Thomas the Fourth. I'm the president of the Hampton Investment Group, and the land in Norman at 1700 North Porter is land that I'm purchasing. Appreciate the opportunity to be up here to let you guys know what our plans are, my plans are, and what we have for the City of Norman. I'm from Lawton, Oklahoma. I graduated college from Oklahoma State University. I've lived in Norman since the year 2000. Mr. Castleberry used to be my first accountant when I back in home building, so it's good to see him again. I think I still owe him two. But this, I've been building homes, I've been building multifamily, I've done a lot of stuff, but my goal was always to do land development. So this project means a lot to me. I know it's only six acres to some people, but to me, it's been a dream of mine since I got here in the year 2000. So this neighborhood, Avidon Terrace, is going to be 24 homes, luxury homes, and it's going to be more than that to me. It's going to be something that I've kind of dreamt about and that I've worked my butt off since the year 2000 in real estate to do. So it will matter to me. I thank you guys for the opportunity to live out a dream. Again, it may not mean anything to a lot of people, but to me, this is one of the things that's real and near dear to my heart. So Norman's my second home. I've been here just as long as I lived in Lawton, Oklahoma. So I thank you guys very much. I thank Steve for actually, he's my engineer who's gotten the neighborhood together for me. It's daunting to put a million dollars into this city, but the city's worth it. It's given me a return way more than money can offer. My daughter went to Norman High School, and I thank you guys, and I think you will be proud if you ever go by 1700 North Porter and you see it. If you're looking for a home, I'll be outside right after this. I got contracts with me, but I'm excited. I think you guys will like it and appreciate it, and I'll let him speak about any technical types.
We also do have some slides loaded from the Planning Commission meeting, just FYI. If you, you'll have to advance them yourself, but.
Okay. Steve Landys with Landys Engineering, engineer worked on that development. Really, I've often learned that sometimes keeping my mouth shut is the best thing to do, and please tell me if I probably should do that now. We did, we tried to develop a kind of a smaller subdivision area at this location. It is single-family residential. It's right off of a stoplight right there at Stone Seifert, works around through that area. We did develop two common area lots. One's also a detention pond, but we actually expanded additional area into that. The depth of it is, a maximum 100-year storm would only actually provide about two feet of water in the first place, so primarily it'll be used as a greenbelt space, you know, for people within that development. We also created a secondary lot that'll have a small pool, try to regain that idea of a community, you know, within a certain area, have your own community area, if you want to call it that, or pool, clubhouse, the type of things like that, just to try to kind of create a little bit of community in that area. Other than that, like I said, it's standard, it was pretty much R1 residential type of development, except the lot depths are a little bit narrower or depth, you know, a little less deep as a standard lot. Widths are exactly the same, and then that we can answer any question you might have.
All right. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, I had, I just had a few questions, and if we do have some slides that, I don't, if we could flash those up there.
Use your mouse.
Oh, okay. Did I do that right? Oh, other left, sorry. There we go. That, of course, is the property on the very north side of the Masonic Lodge, I'm sorry. And, of course, that's a piece of ground, large open ground, or rapid track. Street at the intersection, directly across the street. That's just the general appearance of the subdivision. Up there in the northwest corner is, we could have actually gotten a second lot out of it. We felt it was better to actually leave it as larger open space for more of a community use. And then see the little bit of on-street parking right there in that other common lot right through there? That'll actually be used for a small playground for smaller children, small pool area, kind of a community area.
Okay.
And so that's what we kind of wanted to have, that kind of approach, of course, with the sidewalks. People have dogs. We could actually have the dog park, yeah, kind of an idea. Actually, I was raised here as well in Hall Park many years ago, and it was nice to have that community and, you know, things like that. And I think we've kind of lost a little bit of that, so this was a kind of an attempt to do that same approach.
So you're coming forward requesting SPUD, I believe, and I think that's because you are building homes on a smaller lot size, right? So you had to address setbacks and some other things that would not be normally allowed, so that's why you're doing a SPUD.
Yes, ma'am.
So could you, I'm just curious as to why you've chosen, you know, to go this route to maximize the number of homes you can build, or you have something else in mind of not having as much lawn to care for, or just curious about how you, why you decided to come forward with smaller lots?
I think it's a combination of all those things. A lot of the research that I've done, especially mostly the stuff that I build is in Edmund, Oklahoma City. A lot of what's going up there now is the more modern design homes, two-story, still for families, but they're built more two-story. You don't need as much space. You have a lot of millennials, you have people who are, travel a lot more with COVID. A lot of people don't want to be in their homes anymore. They want to be able to leave and their house be self-sustainable. So we're going to make sure that we're going to have all the high-tech stuff in them, but it was mostly just to accommodate what I see in the market up north that's trending coming this way. And since there's only 24 lots, I believe this will be a very nice community for people who like to be at home, who like the smaller lots, a community field, swimming pool, but they don't want a big yard. They have sprinkler systems, they're going to travel, so they don't want to have to take care of their home when they're gone and have to worry about it. So it was more market research for my team that this is kind of where the market is headed. You have a lot of people coming from California, Dallas. You have people coming from these bigger areas because of the cost of living here in Oklahoma, but they're also expecting to start seeing some of the products that are in the bigger city. So this is just kind of introducing that, but still with the Oklahoma feel and still with what I know. I used to be the Sales Director at Home Creations for five years, so I still want to be able to incorporate that type of feel, but just with an exterior modern look and kind of some more new designs.
So I was interested in what the square footage, what is the projected square footage for each of these homes?
I will probably have the covenants restrictions down to 1,300, but I would imagine 1,700 to 1,800 would be what I would probably build spec homes at. I would imagine I'm going to be at the $200 a square foot price point. So I'm going to probably be at 1,700, unless it's a custom max out at about 2,200 with rising interest rates and stuff like that. I want to make sure I can still stay affordable with obviously the land cost and other variables that come in. But I would imagine 1,700 to 2,200 square feet.
And you did describe these as luxury homes, so would this be, would a first-time homeowner get to have an opportunity to purchase one of these homes?
If they make enough money, yes.
Okay, so this would not be considered at the lower price point of home entry?
350 to 450, I imagine, would be the price point. I build in Summit Lakes right now. The average home that I have sold in Summit Lakes has probably been 335, and those are just your standard, normal-type brick homes. So I think the price point may be a little more, but that will be just because of the value of the land more than it's going to be the actual cost of the home, regardless of what type of material I use on the exterior.
Well, and I was also curious, because in your SPUD, you described allowing accessory, one-story accessory buildings, yet these lots seem really. one-story accessory buildings, yet these lots seem really small. So what are you imagining what an accessory building could be? Because the garage is actually on the front, faces the street, right? So you're accommodating for a garage in your renderings that you have. So what do you envision needing to be allowed for an accessory building?
Just a small storage shed.
Oh, okay, okay. Because you have, on your site plan, there's, you know, room for a patio, but it just doesn't seem like there's much left back there. So, yeah, so allowing for something like that for lawn care, that kind of thing?
Just for lawn care and things like that.
Yeah, okay. And then the other thing that caught my attention is that you are asking for 75% impervious surface for these lots. What was your thinking behind that, since 65% is normally what's allowed?
Actually, the real difference between just standard R1 is the actual depth. Most R1 lots are, of course, are minimum 6,000 square feet. These are closer per lot of 45 to 5, so that's basically the difference. If I added that additional 20 feet, we would be right in that same area.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that explanation. And then, one of the things that we talk about on almost every zoning application is underscoring the continued issue that we have with stormwater mitigation and our inability to convince our voters how important it is to have a stormwater utility. So if you could just basically describe, you mentioned a detention pond, but just basically describe your stormwater plan. It's the only way that we have as a council to address stormwater is project by project. So you have a large detention pond on your site plan, so could you talk about that a little bit?
It's a completely dry pond, so it's basically about a two-foot-deep area, so it's really not in a great depth. We will have a little bit of a, kind of like a two-and-a-half, three-foot levee along the backside. Currently, little small black dot in the back is actually an inlet that already exists there. Stormwater actually drops into that, goes to the back, and then carries on to the underground storm system on the adjacent neighborhood. Same approach is what's going to be done, except we're restricting those pipes down combined with the additional impervious surfaces. So therefore, during a 100-year storm, you know, the large, when very few people are going to be out in the streets, there would potentially be the 18 inches to two foot of water in that area. During normal storm events, this will be something that will rise rather quickly and drop rather quickly. Primary goal is not, of course, to get the water off the streets, not to impact any other homes, but the primary goal is not to impact any adjacent property owners. So therefore, currently, water runs in that area across the grass and actually could impact the homeowners into their backyards, you know, on both the west side as well as the north side, as that water comes across. Now we're actually catching, collecting it, holding it by increasing the time range, and then allowing it to discharge that storm sewer system. So we should actually be improving potential flood events on the adjacent properties while at the same time taking care of all the homes, you know, through that internal drainage structure of that subdivision, and make sure that our holding capacity is such that it doesn't adversely affect the current city's infrastructure, which is the storm sewer system. Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate your explanation. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Let's see, there are a couple of questions. The, right now, it's at that intersection, it's a driveway that goes into the Masonic Lodge parking on the north side. Will that connection still be there? I don't see it on this plat, or how would they access their parking lot? I guess if this...
When we got the first drawing back from Steve, we had to go back, I had to go back and buy additional land from the Masonic Lodge to accommodate what you see on the screen. So they will still be able to turn left, but the majority of that parking lot now is essentially split down the middle, which will go straight down our street, and then the other way will go into their driveway.
Okay, so is this lined up with the current intersection?
Yes.
Okay. And then their parking lot is a little bit south of that?
South, yes, sir.
And so they're still going to be able to turn in off that signalized intersection?
Yes, sir.
And they'll be able to get to their parking lot?
I do want to address that a little bit tighter.
Yeah.
Because you're right, right after that street light, there is that immediate turn back into their parking lot.
Yeah, I think there's a dumpster sitting there right now, yeah?
Yes. One of the things I have tried to talk to him and them as we get the development moving forward, I would love to be able to talk to them about closing that driver approach and moving it further to the south. I think it's a better safety factor for them as well. They'll be able to pull out, utilize that new street, you know, to get out at the stoplight better. Right now, we really didn't have the right to completely ask or try to demand for them to do that, but I think from both their standpoint as well as ours, it'll be a lot better circumstance to actually pull that further back. One of the criterias on this development that we had, when you purchased that extra land, there's an entire line of elm trees that are large mature-growth trees.
That is on my list too, yes.
And one of the things, even with the city, they were telling us, no, we had to actually put a sanitary sewer, you know, the service along that side of the road, and we've kind of fought them and said, no, we'll object to that because that was part of the agreements, that we will protect those trees not to allow anything to happen to them. So really, if we put that drive, move it or whatever, part of that will be really directly working with the Masonic Lodge to try to relocate that area, and at the same time to protect what their primary goal was with those trees up there, not only for the buffer, but those are, even though they're elms, they are probably 40, 50-year-old trees.
Absolutely. So I did want to clarify that access issue and if that was worked out. And then, the trees, definitely important in my opinion as well, the trees that are between the lodge and this property, but also the trees that are along the street, along Porter right there. Will those be preserved as well?
The trees on the south side, contractually, those trees will be safe. That was just part of the contract for purchasing the additional land. The trees that are on the east side, closer to Porter, I'm going to do my best to make sure, because I think it gives an added decor to the entire neighborhood, especially in this time of the year. So depending on where the fence line is, depending on where property pins and all that stuff, but my goal will be to save those trees, because I know it will have added value on those, I would imagine, those two lots that are going to be in that cul-de-sac. So yes, I'm going to preserve as many trees as absolutely possible.
In my view, other home buyers have their own preferences, I guess, but to me, that line of trees would absolutely make this neighborhood more attractive to me if I were looking to buy houses there. And other people may not care at all, but to me, that really does matter.
I agree with you 100%.
And planting new trees, you know, it's not the same as having one that's mature and already provides a bunch of shade and, you know, can protect your house from the little bit of the summer heat too. So those were two questions I had about the trees, to see what your plans were about those. So very happy to see that the ones on the south will be preserved, and then you'll be making a lot of effort to preserve as many on the street side as possible. The other question too was the fencing that would be facing the street, facing Porter, I guess the backyards. What type of fencing would you be doing? Would it be just a standard wooden fence or a masonry wall, or what are you thinking?
I know on the northwest, I'm going to just fence that entire, just for aesthetics for the buyers of the new community, and I'm sure the people there won't mind that at all, but I'm going to do that just as a standard feature. On the side on Porter, I would imagine it would be some combination of brick or wrought iron, as those people can be in their backyard and not have to stare at just a fence. So it would probably be either totally wrought iron or maybe a combination of maybe four feet or three feet high of brick and then wrought iron. But I would, I haven't gotten that far yet, but I would imagine some combination with wrought iron.
And would you be working with the neighbors on Crawford Court and Crawford Avenue, whose houses currently back up to that? Because you said you'd be putting in a new fence, so I assume you'd probably be working with some of those property owners?
I think at a meeting that I didn't come to, there was someone that had a question about, since most of these homes will be two-story, that they wanted to make sure that I at least considered it. Obviously, it's not something that I would have to do, but just for their privacy and to make sure I come into the neighborhood, and good gracious, I would want to just go ahead and fence that entire. I don't know if I'd do it right at the beginning, but it will be done at some portion of, at some time during the entire neighborhood.
Okay. And there does look like there's quite a few trees and things that are along that fence line between those existing houses over there that could help if you're able to preserve those too, so. Okay, that's all the questions I currently had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peacock?
Thank you. Yeah, all my questions have been addressed, so I'm just going to take the opportunity to kind of point out something in your PUD that I thought was pretty unique and want to commend you for, and that's requiring that the garage setback be further, deeper than the house setback, so that the garage isn't the predominant feature of the house, and actually kind of brings the porch back to the street and reestablishes some of that community feel. So just want to give you some kudos on that.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions from council, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up? No, we do not. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Item 28, ordinance 2122-41, upon second and final reading, rezoning property located north of 1700 North Porter Avenue from R1, Single Family Dwelling District, a SPOD, Simple Plan Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second by section.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
No ma'am.
Are there any final comments from council? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast and the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. And item 29, a preliminary plat for Avidon Terrace addition, generally located approximately one-half mile north of Robinson Street on the west side of Porter Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Second.
Thank you. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, are there any speakers registered? Madam Clerk?
No ma'am.
All right. Any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the approval of the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now you're done. All right. Item 30, ordinance 2122-45, upon second and final reading, amending the city charter to increase the stipend received by council members and the mayor and creating a compensation commission, increasing council terms from two to three years, beginning with the 2026 elections, changing the beginning of the council member and mayoral terms to follow the designated runoff election date, beginning with the 2025 ward elections and the 2028 mayoral elections, and requiring ward representatives to live in the ward six months prior to seeking election, providing exceptions and ward boundaries change. Clarifying vacancies on council, filled by council vote shall be filled for the remainder of the term in question. Creating the office of the city auditor, providing for the appointment and removal of the city auditor by city council, and setting for the duties of the city auditor. Providing for the appointment and removal of the city attorney by city council instead of the city manager. Increasing the number of board members on the Norman Regional Hospital Authority from nine to 11, and allowing a maximum of two board members to be appointed from other communities. Limiting the time of commencing recall proceedings to modify the process to be consistent with Oklahoma state law, and to allow for additional time to review petitions when multiple petitions are received. Allowing city council to impose a maximum 3% increase in utility rates only after a rate study and a recommendation from a utility rate commission, and modifying deadlines and process for the reapportionment ad hoc committee in consideration of the state's timeline for modifying precinct boundaries and limiting council's action on the committee's recommendation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize our city attorney, Catherine Walker, to make a presentation.
It's almost as fun to write as it was to read. Long title. Had to take a seat. I have a presentation loaded here. Just a brief background, you all appointed a charter review commission in 2019 and gave them a specific list of items to review. That was amended a couple of times through the process as we had new council members come on board. But you voted on August 3rd initially to send, whether to send each recommendation to a vote of the people. You also asked at that time for additional discussion, which we had later in August. We had more discussion in January, and then we recently discussed this again and looked at all the language again, and it was placed on your agenda for first reading on May 10th, second reading tonight. And if passed, it will be voted on, each measure will be voted on by the people on August 23rd. Just a reminder, the ballot language has to be an adequate summary of changes, but it can't exceed 200 words, and we have to keep it as simple as possible, which is really hard when you're describing the charter and things that are in the charter. So we worked really hard to get that done, but it will still be a challenge, and so we're working on an educational effort after this passes to provide more information and context. But I want to go through each of those propositions individually, just fairly quickly, because you all recently went through this a couple of weeks ago. So Proposition 1 will change, propose to change Article 2, Section 1 of the Charter to increase the stipend for both the mayor and the council members. It would increase the mayor's stipend to $8,100 annually, and then the council member's stipend would increase to $5,400 annually. And you'll notice this doesn't start until the 2025 term, because we were working really hard to not affect any current council members in office and have you all vote on an increase for yourselves. It's pretty uncomfortable for you guys, and in fact, the language would require that any additional increases would be reviewed and determined every three years by an appointed compensation commission, who would look at relevant factors, the CPI, the overall budget, things like that, and those increases that they might adopt in the future would not go into effect until a future council is seated. So this is what that language looks like. I will spare you the reading of it, but as you can see, we have to summarize a lot of language changes, but this sets out the compensation commission and that initial increase, and then the ballot language. Attempt to simplify that as much as possible. Proposition 2, it deals with a number of things, because it's, these changes impact several sections, so you'll see a lot of references in here to multiple sections of the charter. But first, beginning in 2025, we would be moving to three-year terms for council members. Beginning in 2026, terms would begin on the first Tuesday following any scheduled runoff election. I told you I'd update this chart, and we did, along with the language, and you can see how that works, and that ensures that the mayoral election isn't on the same date as the same ward elections every year. Instead, the mayoral election would be a standalone. And this is what the language in Section 2 looks like, and we've had to carry over language into subsequent sections as well. Section 5, same thing. Section 6. Section 14, simplifying that, since we're no longer having elections under this proposal in odd-numbered years for odd wards, even-numbered years for even wards. The other change we made to Section, Article 2, rather, is residency. Currently, the charter says you must reside in the city for at least six months prior to running. This is changing that to residing in the ward for which you seek election for six months prior to the election date. And of course, there's language to cover us if reapportionment occurs and you get drawn out of your ward, that six-month requirement would be waived. And so this is what that language looks like. That last sentence, the longest underlying portion, is the reapportionment language. And then this is what the ballot language looks like, and it is complicated somewhat by the fact that we're amending multiple sections and accomplishing multiple things in the same sections of the charter. So Proposition 3 has to do with filling vacant council positions. We're just clarifying language here to match our historic practice, which has been that when council appoints someone to fill a vacancy, they are serving for the remainder of the term. So that is a very simple fix there, crossing out some language that was unclear and clarifying that. This is the easiest question on the ballot, or at least the shortest. Proposition 4 is the city auditor, which you all talked about earlier. This was initially added to the resolution for the Charter Review Commission by former councilmember Castleberry, who made an appearance tonight. We talked about it in the summer of 2020. We prepared the ordinance, and council opted to postpone that, waiting for the Charter Review Commission to look at it. It was rejected unanimously in October 2020, and then the Charter Review Commission looked at it and presented their recommendation as well. But after we talked earlier in May, there was consensus to add it back to the ballot this go-round, and so we just pulled out that old language. It creates the office of city auditor and a new Article 5, and so this one's going to require renumbering of subsequent articles. And so this one's going to require renumbering of subsequent articles. It will mirror the city manager language that exists now and the proposed city attorney language in the next proposition. There's a section outlining the duties of the city auditor fairly generally. And then, of course, the renumbering, as I said. This one's really long, the charter change, because we're creating all new sections for this, all underlined. And this is that language. And you'll see this matches the city attorney language as well. And both of them are modeled after the city manager's provisions, your employee of the council. So the next proposition is the city attorney language, or the change to the city attorney status. It models that after the city manager appointment, as I said. It changes that position from a for cause protected position hired by the city manager to an at-will position. That person would be appointed by a majority of council and could be removed with five votes of the council. And that is what that language looks like. It's essentially the same thing as in the city manager section of the charter currently, with city manager switched out for city attorney. And the question there is very similar to the internal auditor question. Proposition 6 has to do with the board membership of the Norman Regional Hospital Authority. They requested that the number of board members be increased from nine to 11. Still, nine of those members would be Norman residents. The additional two may be appointed from other communities that have a Norman Regional Hospital facility in operation. And so you see that language there, fairly simple, but adding that requirement that no more than two may come from outside of Norman. And then that last, next lesson, it just has a cleanup. Language there, fairly simple. Proposition 7 deals with recall. This is one we've talked about a few times. And it wasn't necessarily, I don't believe it was in the Charter Commission's initial charge, but we got to live through our recall language for the first time while we were in the process of reviewing the charter. And so we talked to the Charter Review Commission and we talked to council about what changes could be made to kind of clean that process up, to better match state law and better match a recent Supreme Court case that came out. So elected officials may be removed by recall, beginning six months from the date of taking office with this language and ending six months prior to the expiration of the official's term. We would incorporate the form used, referenced in state law for referendum petitions. We provide a simple statement, the gist of the petition. The clerk would get 30 days to review if there's only one petition to recall a ward representative, 60 days for the mayor, and 90 days if multiple petitions. This adds a publication requirement in accordance with state law. It deletes language requiring that recall be the only question on the ballot. You all know how limited our election dates are or can be in certain years, particularly big election years. So this would give us some flexibility there. And it would add language that would allow an affirmative vote of the majority of the remaining seated council members to take action if more than four are recalled. And this is because our charter requires five votes for any action to be taken. And so council, if five members were recalled, you couldn't even call another election to fill those positions because you only have four remaining, this being set up. And then the remainder of the changes are to simplify the language and tie to the state election laws. So I'll just go through those briefly. Section 1, it covers that time of commencing proceedings. And the reason the Charter Review Commission recommended to end that time period six months prior to the expiration of the current term is because of the time to count signatures and then the time to set an election would essentially put you at the end of the term Filing of the petition and validation of signatures, this pulls in those references to state law and then adds that time for additional petitions. Notice and publication, pulling in a published notice from Title 34 of the Oklahoma statutes. And then section 4, it's the language that addresses if we had less than five council members remaining after any period of recall and eliminating the requirement that be the only question on the ballot. And then section 5, we're just simplifying that. The timeline before didn't really match as election laws have changed statewide. We wanted to just make a simple reference to that, to the state election law, so that as those laws change, we're automatically incorporating those into our process. So this is what that question looks like. This is probably one of the more challenging things to draft, to summarize all of that into one question, but that is what that will look like. Proposition 8 has to do with utility rate elections. This is one that you all had quite a bit of discussion about too, and it has been a recurring question for every Charter Review Commission I've seen operate since I've been here. This, what council ultimately decided was they wanted to have language that would allow council to impose a utility rate increase of up to 3% without submission to the voters for approval, but only if a rate study had been conducted and it had been reviewed by an appointed utility rate commission that has a representative from each ward and an at-large representative. This is what that language looks like. This section didn't have a title before and we were, we were taking out this language about utility rate increases within the control of the city of Norman. So I wanted to be consistent there and not feed any, any theories that could come up that we're trying to change something that we're not. So that's added as the title. And then you can see the language about the utility rate commission and what has to happen before council can adopt an ordinance that would impose a rate increase. Anything over 3% would still have to go to the voters. And that is what that language looks like. Final question, reapportionment. This is something we've also experienced recently. In the last Charter Commission in 2014, I believe, we made some adjustments to this language and it doesn't really work. And of course, COVID-19, it just exacerbated how it didn't work. So we're changing some of that language to accommodate those federal timelines that we don't really have any control over. Appoint the committee within 30 days of the release of new precinct information for Norman by the election board. The reason for this is state law says we should consider that precinct information, but our previous timeline in the charter had the reapportionment committee reviewing all of the data long before the election board had redrawn the precincts. So how can we say we tried to not split precincts? The committee would have 180 days from the release of new precinct information to complete the redrawing of the ward boundaries. And then council action would be limited to adopting the recommendation, rejecting it, or sending it back to the committee for further consideration. This is what the language looks like in section 2. Just clarifying that timing of when they shall meet and make reviews and review and make recommendations on ward boundaries and tying it back to the election board process. Same thing here. Public hearing, we're taking this out just to give us a little more flexibility for the committee to vote on a resolution. Sometimes meeting days are hard to find, meeting rooms can be challenging to find. Finding time where all of your committee members can be there is difficult sometimes. So we wanted a little more flexibility here. But definitely still want to have the public hearing and have an opportunity to give notice to that. And then finally, this is the council action options for reapportionment ad hoc committee And this is what that question looks like. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
Yes, so there's nine total questions.
Correct.
To be on the ballot. And just to be clear, they're individual, like, are they voting on our compensation and terms at the same time?
Two different questions. So it's possible one question could pass and the other could fail. That's why you saw proposition 2 is fairly complicated because different ideas that the Charter Commission made recommendations on implicated the same section of the charter. So those were all pulled into one proposition. But if they're affecting, if they're different subjects, we put them in different questions.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear. And then you mentioned the word limit because I was, I was actually hoping we could include what we, our current salary is, so that folks would have a reference that we make $100 a month currently, or $1,200 a year. And we'd be increasing it to 51 potentially for city council. And 8, 81 for the mayor. Anyway, but I guess there's enough room to.
Well, I did think about that. The challenge is, it's not a clear-cut $100 a month based on the, I know that's what you all get because you have so many meetings, but based on the charter language, it's so many dollars per meeting, a maximum of $100, and it gets really wordy. If it had been a little more straightforward, I agree, it would have been a good one to include.
Well, let's just make sure everyone we come in contact knows that we make $100 a month.
We will include that in the information on the website, I promise.
It would basically increase city council pay, I think, to 500 a month, is what it, I think is what that is, from 100 roughly, if you attend every meeting.
Yeah, a little less, but.
You attend every meeting.
Or increase it by 500 a month.
I will clarify, during COVID, when we had, like, April, zero meetings. And I've never worked so hard in my life around the clock. Guess how much I made? Zero. Just wrap your heads around that one.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
What type of campaign are we going to do to the public to know to go vote and give them the detail and not just the little ballot language?
We already have a website set up pending tonight's vote. It's ready to go. We have links. We'll have QR code that'll go out in every water bill. I'm also doing this presentation tomorrow with Bryce so that all of the context and all that information can be provided and everyone can just go to one spot and see that PowerPoint and hear how that all came about.
We'll also be touring all the Rotary Clubs and any interested organization. And, you know, we're always available to fill up a slow agenda they may have between now and Election Day. Always happy to spread that word.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley.
I mean, I'm down for doing group meetings like we did with the water thing, just saying. On the recall language, is the, is it written that the process can start before the six months, meaning they can start getting petitions signed? Or do they have to wait until the person's been in the, been in office for six months before they can start that process?
Let me flip that language. So what the language says is they may be removed at any time during the time period beginning six months from the date of his accession to office. And that's the language we've always had in there. So I would think you could start gathering signatures, but the actual removal process, the vote would not happen until after you've been in office for six months.
Okay. All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, does anyone sign up?
The person that signed up is no longer here.
All right. Any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall.
Really, the only final comment I wanted to make is to reiterate what you already had pointed out. But all of these, there's a lot of focuses on changes to the city council, the terms, the compensation and that sort of thing. And I just wanted to say one more time that there is not one person who is sitting on the dais that will benefit from any of this unless you happen to be reelected by the vote of the people. And I think we probably can't say that too much, so.
Yeah. And I'll make sure I say that in my presentation we put on the website too. That is important and that was important to counsel every step of the way on that piece, certainly.
And that we recognize that these are a first step in a lot of fundamental changes that we can like to see and that we are not going to benefit that from, from those changes in any way.
Thank you. Excellent point. All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been, to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. Item 31, ordinance 2122-46, upon second and final reading, authorizing the calling and holding of a special election on the 23rd day of August. Mark your calendars. For the purpose of submitting to the registered voters of the city of Norman the proposed charter amendment stated in the previous item. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, any public comments, Madam Clerk? Final comments? None. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes, and to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. This is miscellaneous comments. Do we have anyone signed up this evening?